Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the June 3rd, 2013 City Council meeting for the city of Waukegan. A roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Nosom.
President.
Alderman Tempest.
President.
Alderman May.
President.
Alderman Valco.
President.
Alderman Rivera.
President.
Alderman Cunningham.
President.
Alderman Conkin.
President.
Alderman Moizio.
President.
Alderman Beasley.
President.
All presidents, mayor.
The prayer tonight will be given by Pastor Gene Langken of the United Methodist Church here in Waukegan. Pastor Langken, if you'd please stand up and please rise.
I ask for your indulgence. My voice is -- I've been sick and I'm still a bit congested, so. And I do want to say, voice my appreciation to the mayor for inviting me to come and lead the prayer tonight, and to -- and my appreciation for the fact that he is willing to listen to a critical voice. And we had -- I had a good meeting with him last week after I had written a critical article in the paper, and he was very, very warmly responsive to my critique, and I commend him for being willing to listen to voices of his constituents. And be all that as it may, may we pray. Almighty and loving God, who is far greater than our minds can comprehend or our hearts contain, we thank you that you are always here with us, no matter what we say or do. We thank you for your love that is unending, unconditional, and knows no boundaries, not even the boundaries of the religious differences that divide humanity. We thank you for your abundant provision for all of our needs and for leaders to guide our community into the future. We ask you to bless and guide these leaders now as they meet together to conduct the business of our city. May they bring to this responsibility humble hearts, a passion for truth and justice, a heart especially for the most vulnerable of our community, and both the strength and the wisdom for effective and rightly directed leadership. Bless and unite our community, the city of Waukegan and all its diversity of residents. Draw us together in a unity that is respectful of differences. May we support our leaders and also hold them accountable. Ground us all in your truth, love, and justice. Accompany us on our journey, both here in this meeting tonight and throughout the daily course of our lives, and remind us that we are never more than seekers of your divine and holy presence, seekers together with others whose faith may differ from ours in some ways, even as we search for common ground. We bless your name, oh Lord, we proclaim your greatness, and we depend upon your grace. Amen.
(Clerk) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into a republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under mayor's comments, I just want to advise our residents, some of the things are coming to our city. On June 6th, the Arts Revolution at 221 North Genesee. On June 8th, the Fishing Derby, Waukegan Park District. On June 8th, the Bike the Amstutz. We all need to get involved in that. I can lose a couple pounds myself. Next one is Business After Hours, Dan Line Gallery that will be held on June 13th. The Cartra Hotel Anchorway Art Show, June 15th at the Cartra Hotel, 405 Washington Street. June 21st, the Waukegan Chamber of Commerce Golf Outing, that'll be at Mid Lane Country Club. Waukegan Historical Society Tour of Homes, June 23rd. The Grand Open near the Cartra Art Space Lofts, June 29th. That's also at 405 Washington Street. And this year, the Independence Day Parade will be held Sunday, June 30th, 2013. Next on the agenda is the audience time. Mr. Dennis Ruddy, please, come to the podium.
Are we being sworn in, or is it?
No, so just go.
Just comments.
Name and address, please, sir.
Okay. Yes, my name is Dennis Ruddy, R-U-D-D-Y, and my address is 1844 South Matthew Court, and that's Waukegan, but it's called Libertyville. So what I'd like to address very briefly today is the issue of the rezoning at the intersection of Route 120 and River Road. I don't want to go back over the issues. I think there are other people here that are easily more qualified than I am to speak directly to those issues and provide you information. But what I'd like to do is kind of summarize the fact that in our minds, there are six open issues right now, and each one of them has a number of open items associated with it. The first being, and the one that's being spoken of the most, is the density, or the number of units to be built on the parcel. And I just want to point out some quick statistics. When 41 units were approved for that parcel, that represented almost a doubling of the density of any other parcel along the River Road. At 155 units, it represented an increase of almost eight times above the most, if you will, crowded or the densest development along the road, which is the Riverbend Plan. At 130, which has been suggested variously by people that that would be a good compromise, it would still almost be seven times as dense as the Riverbend Plan. The Riverbend Plan being approximately .85 units per acre. And so, punchline there, I don't feel, and I think the other people along River Road who have opposed this, would agree that 130 represents a compromise. I think we need to rethink the numbers because we've been up and down and all around, and 130 might look good to some people compared to 155, but, you know, when you take the baseline in that area right now, it's kind of high. Traffic and safety. We've had a lot of meetings, and the one thing that stands out in my mind is that there's never been a discussion of the Route 53 corridor in any other context except noise abatement. There's a very real possibility that some or all of this parcel will be taken for the Route 53 corridor. And I know there's a kind of a feeling out there that this is way down the road, and why should we stop doing something now? But the fact of the matter is that we know that all the communities along that Route 53 corridor have been invited to sit down with the various agencies that are going to make that decision. Home values. We've said an awful lot about home values. The only thing that I would say at this point is, we certainly haven't resolved that in any significant way. We've had Tracy Cross, who presented an argument that there was no problem with property values going down.
Point of order.
Mr. Ruddy, your three minutes is up, sir.
Excuse me?
Your three minutes is up.
Oh, okay. Well, I wanted to make those points, and I would also, in closing, point out that Waukegan's own analysis has raised quite a few issues that the city engineer, the city planner, and the staff have raised. Seventeen open items.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. Lori Nierheim?
Hello, I'm Lori Nierheim with the Waukegan Arts Council. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. I just wanted to take a moment to highlight an event that we're having at Clockwise Theater on Thursday night that the mayor briefly mentioned. We are having an event called the Arts Revolution Evolution, and we wanted to highlight its importance. We are showcasing three of Waukegan's longtime esteemed, significant artists. Skip Wheezy, whom many of you may know and recognize from the mural on South Genesee, Maggie Kraus, and Liz Massounis. Liz also was married to Everett Massounis, the longtime teacher at Waukegan High School. And they've made very significant contributions to our cultural and art scene here in Waukegan. And an accomplished artist, David Dallason, will be interviewing them, and so we're going to learn a little bit about their success as working artists in Waukegan. And in addition, we will be inviting the artists from the Cartra Art Space Lofts over and highlighting their work, and talking about how they will be the artists of the future and passing that torch to the new artists here in Waukegan. So it's an important event. These are pretty significant artists in our history here. We will have refreshments, and we invite the community to come out and meet these artists and learn a little bit from them about their impact on Waukegan. So we hope you'll come out. It's free for our members, it's $10 admission, and that can be applied to membership. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Nierheim. Suzanne Cash?
Good evening, and thanks for having us. I'm Suzanne Cash. I am a resident of Daybreak Farms Community on River Road. I know you've heard about River Road quite a bit already, but there were a couple of facts that I think bear bringing out publicly. Our main -- I have three main points. One is, or two main points, really. We feel like the developer is giving overly inflated numbers to Waukegan. We feel like their sales projections per unit are way too high, based on an analysis of local developments that are currently selling, and we feel like their tax revenues, the numbers don't add up. I just wanted to give you some facts about two townhome developments in the area that are very, very comparable to this unit. The first is a community of townhomes just a couple of miles away from this site, off of Oak Plain via McGee Road, I believe it's Quill. This development includes townhomes that are a little bit smaller, about 1,200 to 1,300 square feet, but they are similar, very similar, to this development in that they have a Waukegan address, a gurney school district, and they have similar density to the proposed space. The proposed townhome sale price that they're saying they're going to sell these units for is $240,000 to $300,000 a unit. The existing units are selling between $53,000 and $120,000. At last check, 19 percent of those on Quill Road were in foreclosure, and the rest have come down considerably in price in the last five years. These townhomes are approximately 27 percent smaller than the ones that are proposed, yet they are selling for 60 percent less than what the developer is saying they're going to sell for. So remember, these are Waukegan address, gurney school district, similar density units, selling for 60 percent less currently. Another nearby townhome development is Heather Ridge, which has a gurney address, but it's also gurney school district. These townhomes are similar in size because, and they are typically selling, for under $200,000. Similar size, same school district, neighboring town, $200,000, as opposed to $240,000 to $300,000. This community also has a recreation center, pools, and a tennis court, which this unit does not. They are also set well back from Route 120, and yet the prices of these units are considerably lower. So the bottom line is we have two very comparable communities which are selling currently much lower than what they're talking about here. If they don't sell the units they're proposing, Waukegan really needs to seriously consider what the impact would be. Are we talking about rentals, uninhabited, unmaintained residences, a partially completed project? That's certainly not the tax.
Suzanne Cash, that's your three minutes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Finish your thought.
Oh, well, I was just going to say, it's certainly not the tax revenue boom that they're talking about, and it's not the view that they're proposing, which is some sort of idealized best solution for this property. I think Waukegan just really needs to look very critically at their numbers before they buy into them.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Ortiz?
Good afternoon, mayor and city council. It is my pleasure to be here on behalf of Waukegan Main Street to give you an update of all what's going on downtown. Now, one of the first things that I would like to emphasize is, Waukegan Main Street would not be where it is right now if it wasn't for the wonderful support of partners such as the city of Waukegan, and also its amazing volunteers that throughout the year they continue to volunteer their time and their services for our various events. So to start off, this past weekend, we held the Second Annual Scoop the Lake Regatta and Dinghy Poker Run. It was very successful. Actually, the mayor and the Waukegan Main Street president were invited to speak at the kickoff event that was held on Friday evening. This joint venture of the Waukegan Yacht Club and the Anchorage Yacht Club also supports Waukegan Main Street. Along with promoting our beautiful lakefront in harbor, this event serves to introduce the voters to our downtown, and at the final party awards was held at Greentown Tavern. Also, again, join our partners. The Waukegan Arts Council will be holding their event on Thursday, June 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00. It's called the Arts Revolution Evolution at the Clockwise Theater at 221 North Genesee. Also, on Friday, June 7th, the Friday Lunch Concerts begin at our amazing Waukegan Public Library that, by the way, just received a national award. And Jerry's Tacos will be providing lunch, so please come take a break and enjoy some music. Also, on Saturday, June 8th, is the Second Annual Bike the Amstutz. It will be held from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., and this is a free event. And also, please don't forget, the Steiner Pavilion will be holding a concert afterwards, and I believe that will be at 6:30 with also benefits going to the Waukegan Bike Project. Also, on a personal note, I would like to invite you along with some of our partners, the NAACP, the League of Women Voters, the Exchange Club of North Chicago, and Most Blessed Trinity Respiratory Health Association and Sierra Club, to our Health and Environmental Justice Forum on Thursday, June 13th, from 6:30 to 8:30 at North Shore Church of Christ at 326 Julian Street. Please come and join us to learn about local coal pollution impacts, environmental justice, and also the Clean Power Lake County Campaign. Also, on a personal note, I would like to say that I'm here also with members of Greater Faith Church Baptist with Pastor Jordan to say that I am in support of prayer during our meetings, and as Matthew 1926 says.
Your three minutes is up, I'm sorry.
Thanks. With God, all things are possible. Thank you.
Nancy Graff? Nancy Graff? No? Reverend H. Lee Jordan?
Pastor H. Lee Jordan, Greater Faith Church Baptist, 565 Powell Avenue, Waukegan, Illinois. I am here along with members of our congregation to stand in support of Mayor Motley, stand with him on allowing prayer back into our city council meeting. We are here to continue to support him because I'm aware of that he's facing a lot of criticism. A lot of critical articles have been written about his stance and his choice, and I just want him to know, to reassure, that the members of Greater Faith and many other churches and pastors in the city of Waukegan stand behind you in praying during our city council meeting. Again, Romans, Chapter 8, verse 31 says, "If God be for us, who is against us?" Amen.
Cindy Singh, please. Cindy?
Hi, my name is Cindy Singh. I live at 32760 North River Road, Libertyville address on a corporate Warren Township. I was asked to come tonight to speak on behalf of the River Road residents. I was given something over email. I'm not comfortable reading this because I'm a kind of a fact checker, and it sounds great. However, I did not write this, so I'm not comfortable reading it, and I would like to email this to all of the visitors and -- sorry.
Give me a copy.
Okay, I would like to have a copy made for all of our aldermen here and the mayor as well. It's very well-written. I just, I would like to say a few things on my own behalf, and I'll get out of here. The bottom line to me, and this is about the River Road development, in my own words, is that the Alderman River who represents the homeowners on River Road is willing to throw them under the bus for an estimated $225,000 in more taxes per year for the city of Waukegan. That would be from the proposed change to R5. They're talking from going from 41 homes to 155 and more, and that will change forever the direction of River Road. I would assume that developments such as Astors will be a big boon to Waukegan, but that money will be gobbled up, leaving the River Road residents high and dry while paying some of the highest taxes in the county, and aggravation of trying to get to work on a crumbling road, and in terminal line of traffic either from 120 or 137. I live here, I know it, I've been here 40 years. I present my tax bill for a home in Waukegan this year that we own, which is 30 percent higher than the original tax bill 2005, even though it assessment went from $195,000 at its highest to $143,000 this year's. However, my tax bill went from $4,500 to $7290 this year. I talked to the assessor, he's a wonderful man. I understand what's going on, but it's just, I wonder if the people that are going to buy into the Astors that are on River Road know what they have coming, because it's coming. There is, Waukegan is one of the highest in the state for taxation, yet people continue to complain about its infrastructure decline in property values and lack of authoritative command of these problems. Waukegan is a very old town. It's rich in history and many great neighborhoods crying for help. For you to take the River Road corridor and move it with R5 housing is not a panacea for Waukegan, it is a disgrace. I hope with my heart that you will give this great, great, great consideration. River Road residents and subdivisions thereof represent some of the highest taxpayers in Waukegan because of the unique characteristics of the corridor and high-end homes. As a farm owner, I fought every development on River Road, beginning with Daybreak Farms, as I have a firm desire to preserve the open areas, wildlife, and raw beauty. We have a farm. I fought every one of them, but what they've done there is they've done a nice thing. They've made a beautiful subdivision. Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's time and listening to me. Thank you.
John, Sally, and Mitch?
I'm sorry to hear, I thought that was a slide.
Oh, okay, okay. Harrison Thompson? Harrison Thompson?
Harrison, excuse me, Harrison Thompson, 3149 West Newcastle Court, Waukegan, Illinois. I would just like to say, along with my pastor and many others, that I do support, and I'm very proud of my mayor for having the courage to re-institute the prayer in city council meeting, and I wholeheartedly support it, and I hope that you will too, because I don't mean to offend anyone. If you do not believe, that is your privilege. We believe. We think it would be entirely helpful, and we'd like to continue that tradition of prayer in city council.
Thank you. Tim, I don't want to butcher your last name, 32492 Almond. Tim, how do you pronounce your last name?
My name is Germside.
Okay. You can hardly say it.
I don't.
I blame my dad for that. Wonderful man, though. My name is Tim Germside. I represent Conserv Lake County, or a countywide conservation organization. Our office is located at 32492 North Almond Road in Grays Lake. Conserv Lake County represents what we, as conservationists believers, write in Lake County, that there's a good balance between development and natural resources protection. That's why we partnered with the River Road community in 2006 to help establish the guiding principles that we feel is a very modern voice for what the community wants at that time, and today, as you can see, echoed here. We've been involved in Waukegan for quite a while. We helped establish the Docomyscota Nature Preserve, which is part of the Fields of Cambridge subdivision. We also just, on Friday, helped the park district in Waukegan acquire the capstone to Bowen Park. We believe that communities are better when the appropriate natural resources are protected. In this case, on the Astors of River, I'm sorry, yeah, correct, the Astors on River Development, we feel as though the guiding principles should be the core of where decisions are made from. That's what the community wanted many years ago. The city staff and aldermen were involved in the process. The city council approved those guiding principles. They seem to be ignored at this point in many ways. We really urge the Waukegan, the city of Waukegan, to look closely at those guiding principles and what the history has been here. The top three of those guiding principles should apply here, and I would say that those three are rural character, they want to protect the rural character of the area. They also want to protect the natural resources there, and also have appropriate community's design for the neighborhood. It's not to say that development is bad. 41 homes is very appropriate, a very sensible development. It's in line with the community. Let's stick with that. Let's stick with the bonnet voices that have been created versus the 26-year-old plan that's in place. We encourage the city council to do that. We also want to avoid that kind of spot zoning that could occur with a domino effect that'll go down the corridor of additional developments that would be of similar density. So once again, we are not anti-development. We don't believe the community is anti-development. It's for appropriate development that's sensitive to the community and sensitive to the natural resources there. So thank you for the time, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Walter Williams, please.
First of all, mayor, I would like to congratulate you on your new term. I wish you the best of success in your town of Waukegan. Second, I'd like to acknowledge the Alderman from the Six War. For the last two weeks, I've been looking at this tape since I came, and I really just love this fight, and his, he was the fight that he had for the issue that was at hand when I was here before, and I just really wanted to tell that I really liked it. I enjoy seeing the fight that you have for your people with that. Now, with my issue today, my name is Walter Bray Williams. I'm a new resident from Chicago, Illinois. I was a three-sport All-American. I was an Eagle-like Boy Scout. I grew up at Salem's Baptist Church, Reverend Meeks. My fiancee right there, name is Natasha Pipes. She's a born and raised citizen from Waukegan, Illinois. She's been at the school system for over 13 years, and my fiancee been a grateful member at Mount Zion Church. Today, I come with a problem that I humbly admit today, that it was some mistakes that was made with my landlord, Mr. Mike Sutterback, and others. My point is, a peacemaker is not to avoid a conflict, run away from a problem presented doesn't exist, or be afraid to talk about it. Sometimes we need to avoid a conflict, sometimes we need to create it, and sometimes we need to resolve it. My family is very thankful for the prayers, but what my problem is today is this, and that's why I have this picture right here under here. I'm 36 years old. Here at Washington was the mayor that I grew up in, Chicago, I didn't sing. Obama is my president today, and he told me I had choices, and it's about change. I graduated from Marcus Garvey Grammar School in Chicago, Illinois. I graduated from Marcus Garvey Grammar School in Chicago, Illinois. I'm a young black male from, always grew up in the lower parts of Chicago and well as I am in Waukegan, Illinois. But today, I got rights today and I know well that my family, we have been misdone with the issue I do have with my landlord, but I came to other people with my demands I'm talking about just to try to get some kinda prayer or get some kinda courtesy. I have a gang of cards. I have called and did everything by the right way of the system of calling and doing what's right and praying, and I don't get no feedback. And when people ride past me and I see them one day here and the next day you throw up two fingers at me and you don't respond to my callback about my family issue and you are my alderman, I have a problem with that today. And I'm speaking up for the other key people in these communities as well. Since I've been here, I done helped like Father Blank, I done helped a lot of these kids y'all have in y'all area with these kids about graduating I'm talking about. So I do heard that whatever my point is, whatever your job is, I don't care if you the mayor, you the alderman, you the senator, whatever, be loyal to what you do. Be honest in what you do. Do your job and do it with, do it with respect, but just don't just take people votes and take our tax people money and don't help our people and ride past our people. And that don't mean if you stay in the lower part or the rich part, but be genuine what you do. And I do, and all I'm just saying today, I'm gonna pray for everyone in this room, 'cause all I keep hearing is about prayer and strength and hope. But I am very again disappointed as a young black male who just trying to survive and do what's right. Just be right with people and like I said, just do not annoy my cause with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. Chris Blanks. Chris?
Brother Blank's four zero nine Oak Street, founding president of Black Abolition Movement for the Mind, which is a grassroots poetic five oh one C three organization, also challenging issues of social injustice and equality. One of the things I wanna comment on is within the first ward, we have young people who are out of work, some who need work and if given the opportunity, will work. And I say that on the basis that right now we have a lot of construction that is coming into the area. I've heard some of the elected officials who feel and say that they don't think government should be involved in construction contract negotiation, and I beg to differ on that, because that's why we all put you there to serve and look out for our best interests and making sure that we have a fair opportunities at working within the area. So I wanna say to y'all, I'm hoping that you all are gonna really toe the line on local hire. We have a lot of construction coming into the area and there's a lot of young people within my ward and throughout the city want a fair opportunity at some of these jobs. So I'm saying that not only on behalf of the first ward, but I wanna see young people in the community get the first opportunity to work on some of these construction sites. Another thing I'd like to add to that is that we have a lot of these so-called construction training programs in the area, but when I look out over the vast number of construction jobs, I don't see the representation of those who are supposed to be training young people for work who are getting state, city, and local dollars, but yet and still, when I look out on the construction site, where are these young people at? We've had construction companies, training companies that is in the area that's getting a whole lot of money, but I don't see our young people out here employed getting opportunities for these jobs. So from now on, what I wanna ask is that before we extend another dollar to any training program, have them to come before this city council with some of the young people that they supposedly have trained and put into some of these jobs. So with that being said, also I have a young lady here, you know, she's in closing. She's one of the members of our organization and she wants to come before you all and speak because she, when I brought the young people here, this is the city as it moves towards the artical, artistical arts in the area. We, you know, we've been a part of the arts in the community for some time. So she's here today. I think she's the next one on the list. Give her an opportunity because we always wanna keep our young people encouraged. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Gentlemen, she's not on the list. Do you want her to speak? Yes or no?
Yeah, let her speak.
Okay, miss, if you'll step up, please, and name and address.
Thank you. My name is Brianna Stevenson, five twenty North Genesee Apartment two oh nine. I'm here to share a poem with you all this evening, lighting the mood. So my poem is called Queen Bree. Approach me like a queen. Remember, I'm a teen, not your baby. Deserve to be treated with respect. Don't you dare talk to me like that. I'm my own boss. You can't control me. Only God can tell me who he wants me to be. Never in your dreams underestimate me to be a girl with no dreams. Goals and dreams of mine are already in progress. Me being with you was no kind of progress. Boys are so young and overrated and that's why God is true, the only one I've ever dated. I got my mind right and I'm still being educated. Not the one he usually sleeps with. Not his baby mama either. I have no babies. I'm a young lady, a strong black female, who doesn't like to be approached by MySpace or by email. If you choose not to like any of me, let me be, 'cause Queen Bree needs nobody to be happy. Going to school and learning are my top priorities. You're just another person stopping me from being who I wanna be. So by now, you should be leaving, 'cause I was dreaming till I hooked up with you. You call yourself a little gangster and I don't like it cute. And then another poem I wanna share with you all is called The Skin I'm In. I'm dark and lovely, but most don't seem to notice. That the skin I'm in is truly gorgeous. I look like my father, some features from my mother. No matter what they say, I never get too bothered. I stand tall and proud of the skin I'm in, 'cause you don't have to like it to be my friend. Joking made fun of my complexion, but I'm in no competition. I won't paint myself white to impress you and I won't waste my time and money trying to outdress you. I just know that the skin I'm in is truly gorgeous.
I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of May twentieth, two thousand and thirteen, regular session and the executive session from May twentieth, two thousand and thirteen. Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
There are no resolutions, proclamations, presentation, or appointments. The next item is the Judiciary Committee reports. Alderman Rivera. Alderman Rivera, I'd like to make a request to you to refer items A, B, and C back to the Judiciary Committee for reevaluation. I understand there are some issues here. I understand the River Road delegation is here with some concerns. I have been in contact with the petitioner. They wish to change the number from the one fifty-five as presented. I'm gonna meet with them several days this week and try to hammer out a number that I think we can live with, and I'm not sure that's gonna happen. And I can tell all the residents from River Road, I am for development. I am a pro-development mayor, but I am also for reasonable development, and I've talked to several of you about that. Please allow us the opportunity to see if we can negotiate a number that we can all live with. I think you know how important this is to us as council members of this community that we give them another opportunity to present what they feel may be something that we can all live with. So please, if you would, Mr. Chairman, so move.
Second.
Second by Alderman Moizio. Roll call, please.
Okay, comment on that, please. Go ahead. This has been the committee. This went through the Judiciary Committee back in two thousand and eight, at which time we had out there the estate zoning, estate zoning. We negotiated down to R one zoning, which was forty-one homes to keep the integrity of the River Road corridor. So any number above forty-one would have to go beyond R one zoning. And just so this council knows, any number above forty-one would change the zoning request from R one. So if you wanna try to work something out, fine, but...
Ladies and gentlemen, it's not necessary to have a vote. I'm putting that back in the committee. If you would, please, Mr. Rivera.
I think it takes a vote to refer it back to committee.
No, it doesn't.
You have a motion?
There's a motion, second. I didn't need it. I just referred it back.
You're gonna call for the question, man.
Okay, let's go, let's do it.
Can I get an opinion? Excuse me.
Go ahead.
Can I get an opinion from the Corporation Council?
He just told me it's not necessary.
The mayor, the mayor has the right to send a new item on the agenda back to committee on his motion only.
Corporation Council, it's not a new item. This item's been, I don't mind going back to committee. I'm not gonna fight that. I wanna make my point to the rest of council members. However, this is not a new item that just came before the council. This is an item done before, it's for a long, long time, a long time, but if you wanna forward it back to committee? I think it should take a, I think it's worth looking at and I don't mind that. My mind's made up.
Alderman Rivera, please continue.
Very well. Then I would go to, since item A, B, and C will be brought back into committee, I'll start with item D. Approve the amendment to zoning number twenty-three zero seven, adding an additional condition to the existing conditional use permit for a composting facility along with, with the ordinance as presented. And this is in regards to New Earth, adding the, on the motion that we're gonna amend the, that they cannot bring any, any more food products into the area, into the business therefore compost. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Item E, the memorandum of understanding for ComEd Substation on Pershing Road as presented. There was an agreement between ComEd and, and the city of Waukegan, which was a very long process, but in the end, I believe it's gonna be a very good agreement. The city successfully achieved a condition where, especially with Pershing Road, if there's any damage to the road, they would be responsible for the repairs of the road. They also paid for the attorney's fees. So all in all, you know, we've had a, we've built a good relationship with, with ComEd and we'd like to continue to do so, and as you know, taking on utility companies, you know, it's tough. Sometimes you'll lose a lot of money in just all the lawyers alone, so an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, Mr. Clerk, please.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Item F, approve the ordinance creating a new A three liquor license for a microbrewery as presented. This is for a microbrewery with limited retail space, and this license is being created to accommodate a new company that is locating a microbrewery in Waukegan, in my ward. They wish to have a very limited retail space in addition to the brewing and distribution portion of their business. The city did not have a liquor license classification, which fit the needs of this new business. Therefore, a new ordinance was drafted. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, Mr. Clerk, please.
Alderman Newsome.
Nay.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
I like beer, but I prefer bourbon. Aye.
Eight to one, mayor.
Thank you. Item G, approve the ordinance amending chapter fourteen of the city council as presented. This ordinance is in regards to video gaming. Due to the Scrivener's error, the list of city Waukegan liquor license categories that are permitted video gaming license under the Illinois state law was incorrect in that it left out one of Waukegan's pouring license categories and added another license category that is not a pouring license category, and this error must be corrected. Ann Lynn, in this case, who is the Scrivener, corrected the error. There's some businesses in Waukegan that are applying, that have applied for these type of licenses, video gaming, but we had to add the double E license to the list of liquor license in the city of Waukegan. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, Mr. Clerk, please.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Next order of business is Public Safety Committee. Alderman Conkin.
Thank you, your honor. Public Safety Committee met tonight at six P M. We have several items on the agenda. First one is the Public Safety Committee recommends, and ISO moved, that the proper city officials be authorized to pay for the two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen annual membership assessment fee and maintenance agreement fee of one hundred eleven thousand, six hundred thirty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents to the Northeastern Illinois Regional Crime Lab, one thousand Butterfield Road, Suite one zero zero nine Vernon Hills, Illinois, six zero zero sixty-one. Payment for this will come out of line item one zero zero dash six zero eight five two four four three six. ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Conkin, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, Mr. Clerk, please.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Next item, the Public Safety Committee recommends, and ISO moved, that the proper city officials be authorized to contribute five thousand dollars to the Lake County Crime Stoppers, P O Box four five nine, Mundeline, Illinois, six zero zero six zero dash zero four five nine. ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Conkin, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, Mr. Clerk, please.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is purchase of twenty-five Tasers. Public Safety Committee recommends, and ISO moved, that the proper city officials be authorized to waive the bid procedure and purchase twenty-five Taser X two C E Ws and twenty-four, twenty-five Tasers Cam H Ds and seventy-five X two holsters from a sole source provider of Taser International at one seven eight zero zero North eighty-fifth Street, Scottsdale, Arizona, eight five two five five, for an amount of forty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars. The funds for this purchase will be taken from the Narcotics Forfeiture Fund. ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Conkin, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, Mr. Clerk, please.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Your honor, I'd like to make an adjustment to that. The Tasers are also come out of line item two nine six dash six two nine six two six four nine four, for the record.
Thank you, Alderman.
Item D, Public Safety Committee recommends, and ISO move, to authorize to enroll in the Taser Assurance Plan and trade in twenty-five of our current C E Ws for a credit making the first payment forty-one hundred dollars and to pay seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars for the following four years for a total of thirty-four thousand dollars. The funds for this taken, this purchase are taken from the Narcotics Forfeiture Fund, line item two nine six dash six two nine six two six four nine four. ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Conkin, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, Mr. Clerk, please.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is for the purchase of a canine. So Public Safety Committee recommends, and ISO moved, that the proper city officials be authorized to waive the bid procedure and purchase one police canine from Tops Dog Training Kennels at fourteen sixty East Belvedere Road, Grayslake, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed twelve thousand, six hundred dollars.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Our final item on the agenda is the Public Safety Committee recommends, and ISO moved, that the proper city officials be authorized to pay the 2013-2014 annual membership fee of $11,250 to the Northeast Multi-Regional Training Incorporated at 355 Smoke Tree Plaza, North Aurora, Illinois, 60542. This allows, this is a payment of $90 per officer at a maximum of 125, although we have more officers and police personnel in this, this allows all of them to take advantage of any training that we offer them. ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Conkin, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, Mr. Clerk, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Your Honor, we had two items for discussion. One is I'm going to get with the Public Works Director, Mr. Hagerty, and also with Alderman Moizio. We're going to erect a pedestrian safety intersection at Washington and Spring Street that's coming up from the beach area and the train station. The Police Department recommends that the appropriate pedestrian crossings and signage be put in place, so we'll be doing that. Also, the Waukegan Police Department received equitable sharing payments in the amount of $98,456.18 from the U.S. Department of Justice, the Drug Enforcement Agency. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. The next is the final.
Point of order, sir.
Go ahead, Alderman Beedling.
A city employee is going to retire here, and I was wondering if Chief Kirkorian could come up and explain to the audience about Matt, our police dog that's retiring? I think it's important to acknowledge this dog, if you wouldn't mind.
Chief Kirkorian?
Good evening. Matt, our canine that has worked with Officer Mahoney, our handler, for the last 11 years will be retiring in probably about the next four to six weeks, as soon as his new dog is available. He's currently training his new dog. Matt has served with distinction over the last 11 years, many, many wonderful police fines from guns and narcotics to offenders. He's been a good officer for us. He's done a great job. Officer Mahoney's an excellent canine handler, and we know he'll do a great job with his new dog, which is not Cuddles yet, Alderman, but we will, we will find a good name for him. Thank you.
I was just informed that Matt was donated by a family whose son was killed and their son's name was Matt, and that's how he got his name. The next, excuse me?
He's going to go with.
He will reside with Officer Mahoney as his partner, so he'll stay with him for the rest of the life.
Next on the agenda is the Finance Committee. Mr. Valco, Alderman Valco.
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Committee met this evening at 6:45. There was only one item on the business, one item on the agenda. It was authorization to add a change order to an existing contract for professional information technology consulting services. And Mayor, the reason we're doing this, I'm sure you know that we're losing our head IT man. He's retiring Friday. The number two individual in charge is agreed to come on for a six-month interim basis, so we have to make a replacement for him, and we also are going to hire a part-time individual. So, the Finance Committee met. The Finance Committee recommends that the city council authorizes the Director of Information Technology to amend the existing contract with Experis, which is the manpower group, through April 30, 2014, adding an amount of $117,000 to bring the total contract amount to $191,000. Funded as follows: $74,000 as previously approved from Budget Code 555-915924438 and $117,000 from Budget Code 100-103724438, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, Mr. Clerk, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Your Honor, we had one report at the end of the Finance Committee. There were 12 new business licenses that were given through, for the city, 12 new approvals, and, but there were, and there was no new liquor license, so we had 12 new businesses come aboard, and that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. There is no old business, reports in communication. Do you want to discuss this or not? The number? The 2012 tax year equalized assessed evaluation, $1,102,871,31. That's for information only. Under new business, approved payroll dated 5/31/13, an amount of $1,342.20. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, Mr. Clerk, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is for purchase of a canine. So, Public Safety Committee recommends, and ISO moved, that the proper city officials be authorized to waive the bid procedure and purchase one police canine from Tops Dog Training Kennels at 1460 East Belvedere Road, Graveslake, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed $12,600. The purchase will be funded through the Narcotics Assets Forfeiture Fund, and line item for that is 296-629-624697, and I believe the new dog's name is Cuddles. No, that's. That's not true. Motion by Alderman Conkin, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, Mr. Clerk, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Our final item on the agenda is the Public Safety Committee recommends, and ISO moved, that the proper city officials be authorized to pay the 2013-2014 annual membership fee of $11,250 to the Northeast Multi-Regional Training Incorporated at 355 Smoke Tree Plaza, North Aurora, Illinois, 60542. This allows, this is a payment of $90 per officer at a maximum of 125, although we have more officers and police personnel in this, this allows all of them to take advantage of any training that we offer them. ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Conkin, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, Mr. Clerk, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is Waukegan Firefighters' MDA fill the boot, June 21, Green Bay Road and Grand, July 19, Green Bay Road and Grand Avenue, Waukegan Road and North Point Boulevard, August 16, 2013, Green Bay and Grand. Motion to accept.
So move.
By Officer Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Beedling. All's in favor?
Aye.
Item D, accept and place on file the Treasury Report for the month of April 2013. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. All's in favor?
Aye.
Next item is the severance agreement. This agreement is the agreement that we afforded our retiring fire chief, Dan Young. We allowed him to retire with the severance package. I would accept the motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Moizio. Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go to an executive session.
Can we have Alderman's time first?
No, we're going to. Do you want to do Alderman's time first?
Well, we're going to go to an executive session. A lot of times, Your Honor, we come out of there with no action.
Is everyone at counsel? Okay, I'll take a motion to, by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Moizio, to go into Alderman's time prior to going to executive session. All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, Alderman's time.
Alderman Newsom.
I pass. Oh, wait, 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 I have one thing I wanted to talk about. We are coming up on the summer, and this past weekend with the graduation parties and there's birthday parties and a lot of other things going on, I did get a call regarding loud noise. So, I just want the residents to be conscious of their neighbors, and I understand this was early in the day, and I know that we have an ordinance regarding loud music, but I ask that residents be a little lenient when your neighbors are having a graduation party or something in the yard. I understand some houses are really close together, and if they have music just a little bit loud, you'll be able to hear it in the backyard, so if you could be conscious of your neighbors and even go over and let them know ahead of time what you plan to do, hopefully not getting out of hand with the music, it would be much appreciated. And if the music is loud after a certain point, you know, after the sun sets and it's still loud, then I would suggest calling your Alderman or calling the police at that time, but being a little lenient during the daytime when you have this, these things going on. Thank you.
Alderman Tempest.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I want to remind everyone that our beach is open, and we have two concert series coming to Waukegan's Beach this summer. The Waukegan Band Foundation does their Tuesday night concerts. We have eight concerts on the schedule, and then our summer Saturdays concert schedule is out. So, if you've never been to Steiner Pavilion on our lakefront, it is beautiful. You need to go down there and check out some of the music. My only other announcement is I only see a few seventh warders in the audience, but I am having a ward meeting this coming Wednesday night and June 5 at the Bowen Park Theater. The doors open at 6:30 and our program will start at 7:00. Thank you.
Alderman Valco.
Thank you, sir. During the Public Safety Committee report, we heard that the Police Department's going to buy 25 Tasers, 25 Taser cameras, 75 holsters. They're getting into an insurance, an assurance plan, and we bought a dog for 12.6. Total, most of it up, it comes to a little over $93,000. And you also heard from the Public Safety Committee that we took in $98,000 from our drug forfeiture, which encompasses our own narcotics fund, our officers that work with DEA, that work with the Marshals, and also work with ICE, the Immigration Customs Enforcement. So, it cost the city nothing. So, I would like to commend the Police Department for finally getting around to this stuff, going into the forfeiture fund, the Narcotics Forfeiture Fund, and it doesn't cost the city anything, and it makes, we're taking away from the bad guys to bring up the esteem of the city here, especially with the dog. Thank you. That's all I have right now.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you. Sitting up here, and I know, you know, my constituents in the ninth ward out west, I've been taking some really heavy, heavy criticism, and I'll accept it. I'll accept it, I mean, even tonight, the comment that I'm throwing people under the bus. I think that's, to me, inappropriate, because I've always had the utmost respect for, you know, anyone that I come across. There's been really nasty emails. You know, I do have some friends out there. The emails don't come to me, but they tell me, they've shown me these emails, and they're pretty, pretty bad, lies. You know, some of them are lies, stuff that they quoted, quoted me of allegedly saying these type of things. You know, that's, that's pretty bad. So, you're not hurting me. You know, you're not hurting me. You're hurting the city of Waukegan, the rest of the city of Waukegan, and the residents. And I know you're not, you know, it doesn't matter what I say up here, but let's, let's look at some of the benefits that people aren't even talking about. Jobs. Construction jobs. Yeah, it's only for so many years, but those are jobs that people need. Right now in the city of Waukegan, how many areas in the city of Waukegan that we have that are for development? There's only certain areas. You've got the eighth ward, which, that tip, that tip over there, right now, we can't do anything because the tip's already all taken for those areas, for that area there. You've got the lakefront, which, you know, we've had our master plan for how many years? You know, develop the lakefront and the downtown. Then, of course, the ninth ward, which for some reason, there's a lot of things that are going to be coming up in the ninth ward. Things that hopefully other developers that are interested in doing business in the city of Waukegan, hopefully they will, you know, be committed to do some business with us and not shy away from, from the decision that, you know, hopefully in the near future, and thank you, Mayor, for putting it back in the committee, and hopefully they'll come up with some numbers that'll satisfy everyone, but that's the reason why we, we decided to put it back in committee, so hopefully they can, you know, come up with a decent number. It is what it is. But nobody's talking about the off-site improvements, you know, of 1.2 million sewer and water. They're not talking about no city funding, you know, and this developer's about to put in $7 million into this project. Nobody's talking about that. They keep on bringing rentals. These aren't rentals. They talk about, they're not talking about the tax base being expanded here. Then of course, the ninth ward, which for some reason, there's a lot of things that are going to be coming up in the ninth ward. Things that hopefully other developers that are interested in doing business in the city of Waukegan, hopefully they will, you know, be committed to do some business with us and not shy away from, from the decision that, you know, hopefully in the near future, and thank you, Mayor, for putting it back in the committee. And hopefully they'll come up with some numbers that'll satisfy everyone, but that's the reason why we, we decided to put it back in committee, so hopefully they can, you know, come up with a decent number. It is what it is. But nobody's talking about the off-site improvements. You know, of 1.2 million sewer and water. They're not talking about no city funding, you know, and this developer's about to put in $7 million into this project. Nobody's talking about that. They keep on bringing rentals. These aren't rentals. They talk about, they're not talking about the tax base being expanded here. A new community will expand and add to the tax base, thereby helping to give relief to all taxpayers in the city of Waukegan. Nobody's talking about that. Nobody's talking about how this project's going to be done in phases. First phase. But before they even talk about these construction phases, what's most important that's going to be brought into this area is sewer and water connecting to the loop. And guess what? It's being, going to be done in phases. If the first phase, if it doesn't sell, guess what? The project is dead. And who's going to be the winner here? The city of Waukegan's going to be the winner. Excuse me. Can I say something? I've, I've heard everyone speak.
Did you say something?
You're not making any sense.
Okay, please, please, please.
We haven't heard it.
I have. I've had.
This isn't a debate.
Please.
So nobody's bringing up all these, all these things to the city, you know, to the council up here. You know, this is a good project for all of Waukegan. For all of Waukegan. And yes, I'll take the heat. I'll accept the heat for the goodness of the entire city. Because I know this is going to bring additional property taxes into the, into the city of Waukegan.
Stop suspended.
But again, I'll accept it. I'll take the heat. I stand for something up here, because I know it's going to be good for the city of Waukegan. And there's a lot of things that we need here. We need our roads, we need, you know, then we're talking about another, a tax levy coming up in, in December. Now this alderman voted against a 10% tax hike. This alderman voted against that. And guess what? It's going to come back up again in December. Someone's got to stand up for development, because that'll keep taxes at least not continuously to go up. And unfortunately, if the taxes go up in December, hey. Talk to the people that are raising your taxes. You can talk to them. But I don't support any more taxes being raised. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Alderman Cunningham?
Thank you. Three short things. One, I want to echo this grass cutting in these vacant houses. I know I'm taking some folks back to my day as a code enforcement officer. That's what the term was when I was there. And we had a budget set aside for these, that we had a negotiated price with the various grass cutting folks who are out there. I know the position of us trying to cut costs, but we're cutting costs at the cost of how this city looks. And this is not a first ward, a second ward, a third ward. This is a citywide mega problem. Your honor, I, I really believe that Dave is trying his best with the team that he has in informing these banks who own a lot of these vacant homes, but we simply have to give him some money in his bank to be able to cut some of these grass. These are just simply out of control. And I know from in past, we have leaned the property and talking to Dave, it, it doesn't seem like we can't recoup, recoup our cost. However, if we take a look at our city, and the way it is looking, from six, 12 inches, 14 inches, and the way this rain is going, we're going to be at an epidemic of how these vacant homes are. It is no fault of the city of Waukegan. It is just what it is right now. We must be able to manage what it is. And we cannot do that if we continue to say we don't have the money, don't have the money. We must be able to balance this and put some dollars in so they can really put some teeth into this. I know they're doing a fantastic job of getting some banks to come around. Unfortunately, all of them, there's not there. I hope the other alderman would join me with this, with this message that we must, we simply must be on the attack of not allowing this to make all the hard work that is being done of some of these vacant homes. They're going to be here for a while. There's nothing we can do about it at this point, except manage what we have. I commend Dave and his team for trying to fight a battle, just, they got to get money. They have to have dollars in their coffers in order to handle this problem. It just does not look good at all for us. Second, I, I want to echo Alderman Tempass in saying, I'm glad this River Road issue has been placed back into committee. I too believe there's a lot of unanswered questions that are out there, a lot of propaganda's going on, whether it be positive or negative. Fact of the matter is, there is some things that concerns me, that I think that needs to be answered. And the best way to do this, the process that we have, put it back in committee so we can kind of hash these things out. But I think what needs to be very clear, and this is just my own perspective, I take a look at from a density standpoint of where I grew up in public housing. We all know public housing was a thing that the federal government did to settle some of the inequities that existed back in the 50s and the 60s and the 70s. If you take a look at the way that concept was of packing people on top of people, that was not the best way to do it. Unfortunately, that was the best way at that time. If I had to play this all over again, was part of those leadership discussions, I would have had less density, more space amongst people. That is the key to success. That's what homeownership is all about. I'm looking to see exactly through the, through the, Mr. Chairman, who has passionately been pro, you know, development and making sure Waukegan gets its best, I think there's going to have to be a happy medium. Currently, we have one of the best landscapes homes probably in this, throughout the city of Waukegan. If I lived there and this was coming, I would be up in arms. Selfishly, it may be, it is what it is. But right now, I just don't feel in my heart, in my soul, that throwing that much density on that type of area is, it might be the best way. I'm very open to see what else is out there, but you can't tell me, I got a house by golf course, I take away nine homes, I'm going to stick there, you know, condominiums. I don't think that was the intent. And listen to the history of Alderman Tempass with estate planning, how those originally came about. And one of the biggest things that concerns about this entire project is that the county of Lake has only approved 41 homes with their current sewer system. If I'm wrong, please let me know. They have not got the approval for anything beyond that. And this comes from the representative on the county board who serves that area, who was on the floor. The county board floor says, we are not going to approve anymore. So I, it's a lot of unanswered questions. And I would caution them to say, you need to resolve that issue before you come in and try to resolve this issue. Because if we said yes tomorrow, you still got to get approval from them. And that's kind of where the confusion part is coming in for me. So Mayor, I commend you on that, that, that's what leadership is all about, and hopefully we'll be able to get some resolution on them. Congratulations. Last but not least, there has been a lot of discussion within the state department, within our state government about gun control and saying that people can carry guns openly. I don't know if they've passed that bill or not, or where they at with it, but I can tell you this. I'm going to speak from an urban area here, and I hope our chief of police and the men and women that serve under him would appreciate this. We cannot, we should not have people walking around here with guns. We must have law and order here. If we take a look, just example, within our northern part of our state, particularly Chicago, Illinois, you see young men and young women, irresponsible owners, have these guns, and they're killing each other. The unfortunate part is, it happens to be African-American young men and Latino young men who are doing a lot of this killing. And it's little babies are being killed on a daily basis. The argument is that if I have a gun, you have a gun, it won't be any, there will not be any more violence. I disagree with that. Our state cannot accept by putting this on the backs of the local people and saying it's okay. The reason why? Someone smart enough can go and sell guns at the back of a truck, a car. Those guns going to end up particularly hurt our police officers, firefighters, code enforcement, heck, even me. As a city with home rule authority, we should have the right to enact ordinances that prevent these bad owners or people from having guns in our society. I stand on that. I, I know it may be, I'm going against a couple of my colleagues up here, but fact is, everyone is not responsible as some of my colleagues up here who own weapons. That 3% or 4% of the laws who's causing the dangers in our society. And as a leader, in looking at what it has done to particularly young men who look like me, talk like me, walk like me, it has not been the best. That's why we must have some type of controls, get it out of the state, get it out of the feds, and put it in our hands, where we talk to and see what's going on in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Alderman Cunningham?
Thank you. I have a couple of things. First off, at the last meeting, I announced the Memorial Day Parade, and wasn't quite as attended as well as I'd like, and unfortunately, I'm going to blame that on the weather, because I think everybody, you know, a lot of people knew about it and wanted to come down. But I wanted to personally thank the two Korean War veterans that we had speaking, that was former Mayor Bill Durkin and veteran Bill Howard. They both came down and gave speeches. But the keynote address was delivered by Command Sergeant Major Willie C. Washington II, who is the senior enlisted advisor of the Western Sector United States Military Entrance Processing Command in North Chicago. It was a fine job, a fine parade, and a fine program at the end, and I wish everybody could come down there. And as Mayor Motley said earlier, I hope everybody makes Fourth of July parade. I wasn't going to talk about anything, but I have to comment on the things, some of the things that have been said by Alderman Cunningham. The situation sits there right now that the Illinois State Senate and the House have passed a resolution for concealed carry. They were required to by the Seventh District Court to have something in place by June 9th. That's a mandate. If they don't have something in place by June 9th, then it goes to constitutional carry, which as Alderman Cunningham said, would allow people to actually walk around with a gun on their hip. I think that's going a little bit far myself. However, some of the provisions in the bill that have been passed by both the Senate and the House, I think are far-reaching in respects to the average citizen of Waukegan. They're allowing home rule entities such as Waukegan and Chicago to have their own laws regarding gun control and the controls in their communities. I think that's wrong. As of right now, the city of Waukegan will be following state statute. That's what we passed last year, I believe it was, to pull all of our gun control regulations out of the city ordinances and just follow what's printed by the state. I understand some of Alderman Cunningham's concerns. The issue I have with these is, the bad guys that Alderman Cunningham talks to, talks about, the guys that buy them out of somebody's trunk, the guys that are dealing drugs, they already have the guns. That's something that you got to think about. They already have them. The honest, responsible citizen should have a chance and should stand a chance to be able to defend themselves. And getting this concealed carry, like I say, which is mandated, we're the only state in the Union that doesn't have a concealed carry law, but it will be, something will be in effect by June 9th. And one issue that happened here in Waukegan not too long ago, a man was killed. He had his, killed for his car. I hate to bring up bad memories, but it happened. Now, I'm not saying he would have stood a chance had he been carrying a gun, or he would still be alive today, excuse me, but I think he would have had a chance. And it also might have put into the minds of the guys that carjacked him and killed him, that maybe this guy's carrying a gun, maybe I don't want to do this. So there's arguments of both sides, and I respect Alderman Cunningham, but I firmly feel that, I know that all states that have enacted concealed carry laws, violent crimes have gone down. Robberies, muggings, rapes, murders, they've all gone down in states that have concealed carry laws. And I think it's about time that Illinois joined the rest of the country. And I also think that we're going to see this go to court for a while, because I believe that our legislators put a lot of onerous conditions. They're going to make it very expensive to carry a concealed weapon. They're going to make it difficult. So if I wanted to drive to Southern Illinois, if I pass through Cook County, all of a sudden I become a felon, because they're a home rule state or a home rule area. I might be able to carry one in Lake County and in Waukegan, but as soon as I get into Cook County in Chicago, I become a felon, because I don't have, I'm not following their restrictions. I think that's wrong. I think there should be some consideration given to veterans. These are guys that we have counted on to protect us and carried guns throughout their military careers. No exception for these guys and their knowledge. So like I said, there's a lot of good and bad, and I expect Alderman Cunningham, and I thank you for bringing up those points, but I personally am for the issue, whether you like to carry a gun or not, you would benefit, because the bad guys, one, they already have them, and two, nobody will know whether you're carrying one or not. So if you don't believe in one, don't carry one. It's okay. Have a good day. Thank you.
Alderman Moiseo?
Just a couple of things along with Alderman Tempass's line. I get calls daily about lawn grass and vacant homes. And I've said it a thousand times up here, there's not a piece of land in this town and probably in this country that somebody doesn't own. And if you own it, you're responsible for it. The problem is, is trying to find out who owns it so that we can track them down to get it. If you don't believe me, you can ask Dave Marion, the gentleman back there. He probably talked to midnight about how hard sometimes it is to find out who owns the property, because you get the shuffle from everybody, because nobody wants to take care of it. And Mayor, we probably need to think about maybe hiring someone or doing something about all of this. I know Carmen works tirelessly on it, but I don't, you know, she, if, if that's all she's going to do, that's fine, but I don't think she can do that and anything else. It's just, it's just too much to do. And the ones that are in bad condition, I said it, I'll say it again, Alderman Cunningham's on board with me, Alderman Beeding's on board, some of them, we just got to come down, we got to tear them down, they're not worth it, get rid of them, tear them down. They're, they're, they're a crime waiting to happen. We said it, they're a crime waiting to happen, a vacant building. We have to start to attack it. We've waited too long to not do anything about it. And I'm usually not one to say when we don't have money, we can't do something. We got to try to find some money somehow to try to get this taken care of. One, to take them down, and two, to try to maintain them. I mean, in the past, I know some of us up here, and some neighbors have cut the grass. I mean, it's been every, every solution. The mayor, I mean, the neighbors cut it, or I walk my lawn, whatever. It happens all over the town, but it just has to, we have to try to come up with a solution, because it, as you drive around, it's gotten, I think, maybe a little bit better, but it's still not where it needs to be. So we have got to try to develop a plan on how to, to deal with it. The city yard staff, we don't have enough staff to do it. That doesn't mean we can't find another way to do it, but right now, city yards... That doesn't mean we can't think, find another way to do it. But right now, city yards does not have enough manpower to go cut grass. They just don't have it. So we have to try to find a solution to that, so that we can, again, it just, I mean, would you wanna live next to a house that's got two-foot-high grass? I mean, it's miserable. So we have got to try to deal with that some way. I'm gonna talk to, to, uh, Tom Haggerty about that, see if we can't come up with a solution that's a little more feasible. If not, we're gonna have to try to find some money. And, uh, pretty soon, we're gonna have to start taking down some of these, uh, these ones that need to be taken down. Thank you.
Alderman Beedling.
Local hiring. We, uh, recently did a project in the old, uh, City Hall Police Department. And we took a bid that was $854, higher than the lowest qualified bidder. I requested a list of the personnel that worked on the project. Couldn't really get one. So I stopped by several times and spoke to some of the workers there. And granted, I wasn't there in the beginning when they did the wrecking, which I understand, I think, uh, Brother Blanks, who works for Stewki, did some of the wrecking there. I don't know who was on that crew. But every other person that I spoke to, they lived in Zion Beach Park, Pleasant Prairie, everywhere but Waukegan. And I usually stop by right around lunchtime. They're not buying lunches at our restaurants here. I was in construction 35 years. Most of us, the vast majority of us, pack a lunch and bring it to lunch every day. I think what people up here need to understand is, in the trades, we get 30 minutes for lunch. Not an hour, not an hour and a half. We get 30 minutes. So it's a hardship to have to, at noon, jet out to your car, drive to a restaurant, wait to get your meal, even the car on the way back, then you're back at work. So it's just not practical to imply that it's gonna somehow pump up the local economy. I also understand that, uh, a local contractor bid on a local job, and a local subcontractor was part of that winning bid. And upon winning the contract, the general contractor bid it out again. And the local subcontractor that won part of the bid there ended up losing it to someone else who wasn't local. So it's not always as it appears. Things can change. A general contractor, once they get a project, win the bid, they buy all rights, they can go out and, uh, rebid it, and the local ones that were riding on their coattails, they're gone. And they take someone that's cheaper. So I think we need to take things like that into consideration before we get all warm and fuzzy about local hiring practices. Youth Conservation Corps. I visited them two years ago in the summer of 2011. I went over to their facility on Greenwood Avenue. All I saw there was a bunch of kids on computers playing computer games. I spoke to a gentleman that was in charge of the construction, who was packing up his stuff and quitting because he didn't believe in the gentleman that runs that organization. There's a house, if anybody wants to see what they do, how misguided things can get. There's a house that stands empty. Landscaping hasn't been put in. It, I think it lasted probably four years before they finally completed it. It's one of the ugliest homes I've ever seen in my life. It was designed by a Northbrook architect. It's a green house, LEED certified. Go over in Indiana, just south of Glen Flora, you can't miss it. It's like the second house in the corner. It's got a standing seam roof, ugly colors, does not even match with the neighborhood. Uh, th- these are the unfortunate things that go on. The building trades, i- it's not easy. We have our own apprentice programs. They're very rigorous, uh, very disciplined. Have to be at school on time every day for the pre-apprentice program. You have to study, you have to pass your tests. Because the contractors depend on an educated workforce to replace the older workers in the apprenticeship, through the apprenticeship program. You know, it, it's just not something where you could take kids and, okay, we're gonna do this or do that. It, it, it's much more involved than that. And, and I, I think if we don't wanna scare away contractors from bidding on public works projects in Waukegan, or even doing work in Waukegan, I, I, I think we just need to go for the lowest qualified bidder. We'd be a lot better off. As far as the River Road people are concerned, I would suggest to you, seeing that, uh, I, I was at the committee hearing, and this evening, I didn't hear one of you say, you said your address, but not one of you could choke out Waukegan. I heard Libertyville mailing address, Warren School District, or no city at all. So I would suggest when you wanna address the city, city council, you do live in the city of Waukegan. And your taxes are higher out there. Probably higher than they would be if you were in Libertyville. But Libertyville doesn't have the size of a, a police and fire that we do, which is 75% of our budget. That's why your city bill is a little higher than it would be in Libertyville. And I think I'll finish with that. Thank you.
A motion by Alderman Balco, seconded by Alderman Newsom, to go in executive session to discuss real estate acquisition pursuant to Section 5 ILCS 120-2C5. Motion, a roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Tempest. Alderman May. Alderman Valco. Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin. Alderman Moiseo. Alderman Beedling.
For all intents and purposes, ladies and gentlemen, this is the end of the council. We will come out after this and vote on, uh, and vote and adjourn on. Okay, I'd like to, uh, a motion to come back into session by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin. Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
I'd like to entertain a motion by Alderman Valco, seconded by Alderman Newsom, to have myself, the mayor of the city of Waukegan, enter into a real estate agreement between the city of Waukegan and Wisconsin Central LTD for the purchase of railroad property, railroad tracks, uh, in an amount of $2,400,000. Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Of all aye, I support the alderman of the ward.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Motion adjourned by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Adjourned.